I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Here.
Vice President Verducci.
Here.
President Lima.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit outdoors labeled number one or two in the back of Town Hall to the back parking lot or front lawn of Town Hall. At this time, I know there's a couple of folks here specifically for one item, but I'd like to take executive session first with respect to Mr. Jacobone. He was very patient, waited the whole meeting the last time we met, so I'd like to give some courtesy there. So I will seek a motion to take the agenda out of order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Brown. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
And we'll move to executive session. Executive or closed session pursuant to Maryland General Law Section 42-46-5A1. The Personnel Contract for Coventry Public Works Superintendent. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi. Second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
We'll be back. Hopefully it'll be brief.[175.62]
This is not the right path forward. We're urging you to work with us and not against us, and stop trying to silence the residents. Let our voices be heard, let democracy work, and listen to what we have to say because we live here with you guys. Thank you.
Members of the public and council chambers, public comment on docketed items only. Those items on our agenda this evening, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and try and limit comments to four minutes, please.
Yes, Robert Heavy, 607 Weaver Hill Road, Coventry. And first, I'd like to ask the council a question, which is, what was the legal cost of preparing this resolution? Does anybody have that answer?
Could you elaborate on what you're looking for?
Just the amount of money that was spent legally to prepare this resolution.
I'm sure we'll see when the invoice comes at the end of the month.
Okay. All right, but relative to this, you know, whole resolution, as I read the resolution, I see that many of the items discussed are generalities that could be treated as fact. However, many have no basis in fact. For one, you know, the discussion on, you know, Western Coventry Fire using a habitual reliance on fund balance to cover structural operational deficiencies. There has been times that, and most of the budget years, they actually budgeted to apply a surplus to the budget, to balance the budget, because they have surplus in the bank. So it's not necessarily a habitual reliance, but actually it was a budgeted practice. Last year, and for example, the budgeted amount of the surplus was not actually applied. Instead of $60,000, only $37,000 was applied. Relative to the discussion of mutual aid, Western Coventry Fire in 2022 had 89 mutual aid calls into the fire district. They made 281 calls out of the district. In 2023, they had 113 mutual aid calls into the district. They had made 360 mutual aid calls out of the district. And in 2024, when Central Coventry shut down one of their rescues, they had 185 calls into the district, but 509 out of the district. So this district is actually supporting the other districts of the town more than the districts are supporting them. Moving on to another, you know, the establishment of the Municipal Fire Commission, the firefighters of Western Coventry are one group that's not represented on that commission. There was a request to have a representative from the firefighters on that district. That request was never acted upon, never answered. Relative to the Dynamix report, there was only three options discussed. I brought one to the table during the presentation on the Dynamix report, where there was no effort to look at a fire district or a fire department that would have a separate fire entity from a separate rescue entity. It is practiced in many cities and towns, locally and around the country. The other option that was never looked at was actually establishing an east and a west, because the Town of Coventry, as you should all be aware, is two very distinct entities. There is a Western Coventry and an Eastern Coventry. Two very different mixes, two very different atmospheres, two very different sets of needs. And, you know, when this municipal fire district, if it is established, the people of Western Coventry will start paying for fire hydrants and for streetlights, something that isn't present in the western side of town. So it's just another case of the western end being taxed for something that they get no benefit from, right? You know, you saw last year, the western end got chip seal for the roads. The rest of the town got asphalt. And this just continues. So Western Coventry wants this vote so that they get a fair shake. And if this vote were, you know, is allowed to happen, there can be some dialogue between the council, the Municipal Fire Commission, and the people of Western Coventry so that they do get a fair shake, and if they do get a fair shake, they'll vote yes. But by not allowing the vote, you're denying democracy. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Heavy. Public comment on docketed items only, council chambers, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, make sure the green light is on, and speak directly into the microphone.
Michelle Tugus, 17 Anthony Street. First, I want to thank you guys, the beginning of the month. I emailed everybody and Mr. Brown, Mr. Vice President, and Mrs. President, you answered my emails, and I feel that there was a lot of things happening, and I think in the end, I want to thank you guys for listening, because I really think you did, and I really think that you all, everybody, wants the same thing, right? We love our town, we want it to be sustainable. I'm really concerned about this sustainability. I know of some of the fire districts, I'm in Anthony, I love my district, the boards, Anthony at one time was going to be overtaken by the state, and everybody worked together, and our taxes haven't gone up, really, like, it's really run very well. I'm afraid taxes are going up, sustainability. The town is in so much debt right now, how can we really sustain another big entity like the fire station? And please don't take away our vote. You know, I've been here long enough, and I've seen when we used to do the budget, people voted and didn't realize what they were voting for, and our voice was taken away. So I'm asking you guys to really listen, and I know everybody wants the same thing for the town, but let's make it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment, docketed items only, council chambers, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Skip Mays, 707 10 Perry Hill Road in Coventry. I'm the moderator of the Western Coventry Fire District. I think you're doing a disservice to the residents of Western Coventry if you pursue approval of this resolution that you're discussing tonight, and I would urge you to not go forward with it. The General Assembly has an interesting way of dealing with concerned issues, and one of those is to hold an item for further study. I'm going to encourage you to look at that very carefully and consider that as a possible way of looking further, because I don't believe that neither the town council nor the fire commission nor the taxpayers have really had an opportunity to look closely at what has been proposed in general in terms of the fire commission. As to this particular resolution that you're discussing tonight, or you're going to be reviewing tonight, something that I would encourage you to look at is what the enthusiasm is of the voters, which I represent, in Western Coventry. How did Western Coventry get formed? Well, it happened in 1942 after a major forest fire literally destroyed probably a third of Western Coventry. At that time, the only fire service that was available in Western Coventry was the Arnold Farms Fire Department, a privately held farm group that had fire engines and had water supply. And the voters of Western Coventry in 1942 opted to pass and send to the legislature a request for a charter to organize the Western Coventry Fire District, which has existed since 1942. And done so, I might add, with considerable professionalism along the line, and I would encourage you to look further at the level of service that is being provided to the town, the town residents by Western Coventry Fire District. Mr. Heavy rattled off some extraordinary mutual aid requirements that Western Coventry has provided to other departments, other districts in the town. And these are the kinds of issues that are costing the Western Coventry Fire District taxpayers money, recognizing also that the services are truly needed. But if you look at the services that the taxpayers of Western Coventry have willingly and completely supported over the years, the growth, you look at the assets and the capabilities of the Western Coventry Fire District today, it has the newest fire station, the most modern fire station in the town's inventory. It has the most recent and newest rescue that is equipped to all state and federal standards, the most recent one is in the Town of Coventry. We have the most paramedics on our staff of full-time and per diem employees of any town, other fire district in the town. This is the kind of support that the residents of Western Coventry, the taxpayers of the Western Coventry Fire District, have willingly brought to our attention as a board of directors, I am a non-voting member, but our board of directors has been responsive and has provided this level of service to the members of the community that they expect, and they don't complain about it because they know that the board is looking out for their best interests. A second point that I might add is that, Madam President, you mentioned that you had sent a letter to the House and the Senate Committees that reviewed the bills that were being considered. I attended both of those hearings and testified at both of those hearings. I also spent a considerable amount of time watching the town council meetings and online. Unfortunately, I'm not able to get free on Monday nights as often as I would like, so you don't find me here with my smiling face. But on the other hand, I do watch, and curiously, I don't remember, Madam Chairman, Madam President, that the board or that the town council members actually approved the signatory or the content of the two letters that were sent. So I offer that to your consideration as well, going forward, that you may want to consider going to the town council as a whole before you press forward and offer your suggestions and recommendations for things under the signatory of the president of the town council and chairman of the fire commission. I'm open for any questions that anyone may have, and otherwise, I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you.
Council chambers, come forward to the microphone, public comment on docketed items only. Those items on our agenda this evening, make sure the green light is on, state your name and address for the record, please, otherwise we'll go to Zoom. Yes, Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Scott Guthrie, 31 Maplewood Drive. Mind if I give you a handout? I have one for each of you.
Mr. Guthrie, can you just give maybe a title for this document so we can?
Sure can.
Get it to the record.
What this is, is this is every single ballot question that went before the town or the General Assembly by bond, by statute, all the way back to before we had home rule. We were granted a home rule in 1951, the first time they tried to establish a charter commission was in, let me see, 1968, and then that approval failed. Then they did it again in 1972 and passed it.
Can we just pause so I can get a vote for the council, please?
Sure.
Could I get a motion to enter this document from Mr. Guthrie into the record?
Make the motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you, please continue.
So I read the letter today from Senators Gordon and Reptakis, and they mentioned something on the second page, and it talks about the charter. Mr. Mays is right, there was a large brush fire that happened and burnt nearly half the town down, all the way to reach Gouloust Road. 1941, Washington became a district, Tyuk became a district. 1942, Western Coventry became a district. 1889, Coventry District goes to Anthony was their own district. Harris was 1941, Hopkins Hill was 1952, the youngest of them all. As far as I'm concerned, grew the best of the firefighters in the state because that's where I was from. So what they mentioned in the air is, in the 1940s, nothing happened until 1972. Yes, something happened. Something happened in 1947 where Alfred Hudson Senior, a Republican state senator, put a bill in and had passed that said what would happen to the Town of Coventry should something go wrong with the fire department, fire districts. So that would be public law 2147. That was incorporated into the charter, voted on by everyone in Coventry. That is Coventry law. So when everybody keeps talking about state law, Coventry law, this, that, it's in the charter. Gary Cody, rest his soul, all right, during the Central Coventry debacle, loaned Central Coventry $300,000 to make payroll. Had he not done that, there would be no more Western Coventry Fire Department, no more Central, no more Hopkins Hill, no more Anthony, it would have been the Town of Coventry Fire Department. That is what that law was put in there for. Furthermore, districts that provide services, if they make a mistake and are sued, the district is not responsible, it's the town as a whole that pays that debt. If something happens out in the western end, eastern end, southern end, northern end, doesn't matter where it is, if we are sued, every taxpayer pays for that. So these are things that weren't thought of in the past. I've seen all these posts on, you know, how people can vote, who can vote tonight, and I can tell you who can vote tonight. According to 4553, a majority of persons elected as members of any town council shall be a quorum, and a majority of the members present at any legal, may determine any matter legally before them. That's the state law. People talk about, you know, the local charter when it says it has to be four. Well, four is a majority of seven. Right now, we're a council of five. Three is a majority, not four, not five, three. Charter's in special acts, 4521, every town, city, and district has all the existing powers and privileges and is subject to all existing duties and liabilities conferred or imposed upon by this charter or by the several acts of the General Assembly, especially relating to it, until the charter or acts expire on their own limitation or are revoked or repealed. So this, this particular resolution, I support for the reasons that in 1947, 2147, said this is what to do. And if Central Coventry had failed, like I said, we'd have had no fire department. Mind you, they would have liquidated that district more than what the previous board did to it. They stole three fire stations out from under the taxpayers. One fire station that taxpayers paid to put a roof on it, to sell it to a board member who refused to go to the meeting. You want to see things like that happen in this town again? I don't. Western Coventry is a well-run fire district, has the best fire station in the town, but also still owes $895,000 on it. We absorbed that debt. It had two fire stations, the other one is a garage. So you can, you can say that you have great response times, but when the green fire station was open, there were better response times and the further pot out. So back when Central Coventry had their problems, I did a little bit of research. When I say a little bit of research, I'm talking months. I had to deal with that because I was in the legislature, and I had to deal with Pat Morgan, who all she wanted to do was kill a fire district and break a union. And I'm sorry I'm going over the four minutes, both for you and for you, but the truth is the truth. Here's an article from the Texas Valley Times dated Tuesday, April 6, 1948. Chief Arnold of the Western Coventry Fire District favors a townwide fire department. The only fire department, fire district that was opposed to the town taking over back then was Tyuk. Every other fire district was on board. It's time that every single taxpayer, all right, gets the exact same service and pays the exact same price, because we are a community of people. We're not here to be different, we're here to support each other. I may be biased because I served in the fire service, but the fire service is probably going to be taking, you know, a few more years off of my life because my cancer came back, all right? Occupational cancer is not a good thing. Central Coventry lost two men to it, and those two men worked as a team, together. So what were they exposed to? So it would be better if, if the folks in western understood that the folks in eastern really do care about them, they're not selfish. I served on the last charter commission, one of the questions that we wanted to put out was a non-binding question about having a townwide fire department to go to every voter in this town. So now what you have is you have a bill in front of you, or that you oppose, or that the General Assembly says, and I think I, I think I circled something on there that's of most importance because, I hope I didn't leave it on my desk, I really hope I didn't leave it on my desk. The vote, I did leave it on my desk. The vote will be supervised by the Board of Directors of the Western Coventry Fire District. That's the same thing that happened in Central Coventry. You remember seeing on TV, what was it, the box from, it was masking tape, and it was the paper supply company and some hired contractor to do a vote, all right? Do we want to do that again? I think not, because a vote that happens that doesn't go through a legal legitimate voting process is not really a vote. It should be done by the board of canvassers of the Town of Coventry, no one else. You know, anybody can, anybody can say, well, we're not going to adjust the vote, or it happened in the past. I don't want to see it happening again. And I hope that the folks in Western Coventry will join us, you know, in this end, I live in Anthony. I used to live on 117 on Windsor Hill in Western Coventry. I never needed the service. I volunteered to help them out a few fires. I had deadly accidents in front of my house on Windsor Hill that I went to for them. But here it is, we're no longer a town of 8,000 people, we're a town of 38,000 people, rapidly approaching, and it's time that we start considering this as an entire town. We can't, right now, supply the services even close to what we should. And I'm going to just, does the last thing, state law through the health department changed what happens on a CPR call. That's eight people, that's four pieces of apparatus that have to go on a CPR call. So when the dispatcher picks up the phone and it's a CPR call, no matter where it is in this town, someone's going to wake up and look at eight people looking down at that person saying, thank you very much. And I think it's important that, that we start taking care of each other as a community and not separating ourselves. You know, separating ourselves as a fire department is not going to help. I can, I can remember when a former representative out there wanted to make his own town, and he was quite hastily voted out of office. So what we don't want to see is have a separate fire department turn into a separate school department and a separate highway department, because you're not going to be able to afford it. So we are the Town of Coventry, let's act like we're the Town of Coventry, and let's take care of each other as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Last call, council chambers, public comment on docketed items only, before we go to Zoom. Welcome, just state your name and address for the record, make sure the green light's on.
My name is Elizabeth McDonald, my address, 247 Nicholas Road in Coventry. I'm here, I'm actually a member of the board of Western Coventry Fire, but I come here today as a resident. I came to Coventry about five or six years ago, and I wanted to give back to my community. So I'm the newest board member, I've been here one or two years, for the same reason as you, to make sure that I give back to my community. And there's some folks here that I truly respect for their history and their time within the community and within the fire service. I am concerned, however, when I first came to Coventry and I was looking at some of the posts on Facebook and all the things that are going on, I was very concerned about what I was seeing going on in Coventry, at Western Coventry. That is why I joined the board. And what I've been finding is that a lot of that stuff that I saw is not necessarily the full story or not necessarily the truth. So I wanted to come up here and talk about some of those things that I independently have saw and why I have brought my mind over to think that Western Coventry needs to have a say. What I'm noticing is there are many opportunities where, as a town, we are one town, but that I see that sometimes Western Coventry gets forgotten. For example, the bill or the grant that came out was offered to three communities before it came to Western Coventry, we only found out in the end. We don't want to be forgotten. I will say, as a community, I was very surprised to see that Western Coventry residents have stepped up to the plate every time. There was something said about how our taxes have gone up. You know why they've gone up? Because when the board, prior to my arrival, said, you know what, our numbers, our, we need to be competitive with the other communities, Western Coventry residents stepped up and increased their taxes so they can be competitive. When they said we need a new fire station, Western Coventry stepped up. Why? Because they know that the members of the board in the past and now will painstakingly look at things and make sure that we have what we need to meet our, what we need to meet our constituents. I was very concerned when I heard stuff about staffing here and staffing there, but we forget that we are, we are one community. And when my mother got sick, there were members from all over Coventry that responded to help out. So just because we have two different districts does not make us not one town. It's just how we govern and do the things that we need to do. I am very proud of the Western Coventry members, residents, because they step up to the plate every single time. That has not been the case throughout Coventry, and I truly do believe we get forgotten. We get forgotten when it comes down to the fact that, even, I was watching the meetings that we were having, and when I came to the meeting to discuss this whole Municipal Fire Commission, I was actually excited because I wanted to see behind the scenes what was going on. I was watching the meeting, you know what I saw? I saw one person, and I'm very proud of what she's doing, who was sitting there, and every time she brought up something about Western Coventry, it was just thrown aside. We just want to be heard, that's all we're asking for. Every time that Western Coventry has had a need, our residents have stepped up to the plate. I don't think our residents are going to be any different for the Town of Coventry than they are for Western Coventry. What they need to see... What they need to see is that they're not forgotten and that they're, the, the council and others care about the fact that they are. We are one community and we all should count. And I don't necessarily see that in what's going on. And I've been really trying to get into what's going on. I saw you at a recent place. I really care about Coventry. I'm not one of those people who will sit home and show up just to fight. I want to know that our community is being taken care of and I want to know that our residents, even me, who's only five minutes from the Connecticut, five minutes from the Connecticut line, that we're going to be taken care of. I saw that on Facebook, they said something about the fact that we don't have the staffing. I was shocked. We have nine paramedics. We have four current fire instructors who teach at the same fire academy that we keep saying that, that we don't have the, the expertise in the staffing, we do. But what I think is amazing is that those firefighters who've served in communities all over the state, when they're done, sort of come back to our community because they want to help. This new system means that those folks who can't work, that one of those full FTEs will then, yep, they'll be forgotten, just like everybody else. We have four past fire chiefs. Are they, are, is their service no longer needed? I love their expertise. I love the fact that we have folks who train throughout the state. I know many of those firefighters throughout the whole entire state and I know our fire instructors are good, they give back to our community. We are, we are not looking at this whole entire thing. And when I looked at those meetings, I'm saying, I don't care in the end if we come up with a decision, but make sure that Western Coventry is heard because we are a different community. We have 3,000 residents and a lot of space and we will give when we need to, but we need to know that we're heard. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the Western Coventry residents. They want to be heard and you're taking our voice away from us. So I just want to thank you for hearing me. I just hope that you know and understand that we do care about this. We don't, it's not about whether we're one community or, or two districts. Anytime that the bell goes out, I see people from Central Coventry show up, I see people from Western Coventry. That won't change whether or not we're one Municipal Fire Department or not. And that, that's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, Council Chambers, public comment on docketed items.
Hello, Stephen Bosque, 8 Raven Boulevard, Coventry, Rhode Island. I am the Board Chair of the Western Coventry Fire District. And, you know, going back just a couple of steps, the reason why this State House, the referendum that was trying to be passed by the people of Western Coventry was, was a floor motion at our annual meeting that was brought by a taxpayer. It was also stirred a little bit by the representatives in the state. There is concern that this town is having some financial issues, that this could be a bigger pill to swallow and that it looks like it's sort of a railroaded direction that the whole thing is going in. Uh, so it was brought up, it was passed by all the voters present, 35, and it was passed by the Board at the following Board Meeting to go up to the State House for, for consideration. I don't understand what the Board or the, sorry, the, the Council would be afraid of. I mean, if this is a fantastic program that you're putting together, um, and a great offering for the taxpayers and the coverage of the state, I am sure all the level-headed taxpayers will vote for it. I mean, to run away from it just seems kind of backwards. Uh, way back, that used to be what they wanted, was an all-day referendum. Well, we have to have everybody vote on it. Now we've got a section saying, let's, we'll take a look at it. The reason why it was brought forward is kind of what some of the undercurrent that was being said earlier is, there is no trust. The committee, if you looked at that last meeting, talked about already how we're going to sell it to the taxpayers, what the next wave of people are going to be. It doesn't make sense to the people in Western Coventry when you're saying, our total personnel cost is a million dollars. On the spreadsheets that were put out to look at the finances, you put an eight-person crew under the new agreement at a million dollars when you have representatives from the district saying it's going to be $170,000 per head and that puts the cost at $1,360,000 to maintain a station of eight people. And eight people is less than what we have now. It's like, we sent nine people to a fire two weeks ago. And when it was brought up at the, at the last committee meeting, they were like, what'd you go to Sterling, Connecticut for? Why are you going to Connecticut? How do you have that many people that can go out? It's like there's a total non-understanding of what we do and how we're staffed and how we can make things work. The other thing is kind of a little bit laughable is like, we have, we raised taxes, we came out of COVID, we lost driver, uh, sorry, cardiac to trash haulers, uh, to, to Red Cross, you know? It was like, we had to step up. We raised everybody's rates, we raised our dollars. We went to our taxpayers, I stood in front of everybody, sent out letters, posted stuff. This is why we're raising the taxes. The chief did the same thing at the time, Chief Katie. We needed to raise taxes to, to draw a better, higher and more professional people. So we did it and we put in like about a 15% increase on our tax, voted through unanimously. The following year was a 10% because we added staffing. Then we added staffing again. We went from two full-time members to five full-time members. We have more pediatric, sorry, paramedics than any of the other districts. The last six, the last six months, we have missed zero calls because of staffing, zero. That's more than any other district. Every other district here has had brownouts because of staffing, except for Western Coventry. There is two separate worlds. You people have the authority to make it East and a West. When they're talking about dynamic survey, that was on the RFP that they were supposed to look at. And for some reason it got killed and never even addressed to have an East and a West Department. You know, it, I am a strong supporter of the union and of the people in the district. There should be an East, you guys should have morphed into something, you're all the same. It's, you've got the same demographics, you've got the same population density, it's like, but West is totally different. With 3,000 people, the number of calls we go on, if everybody was fully staffed, it used to be three a day, three calls a day, that's a lot. It used to be two, we went up to three. Even if we doubled in population, just that district alone, you know, a million 300 and then putting in a second wave eventually of another eight guys out there, $2,700,000 for three calls a day. So there's little trust that when you listen to those meetings, they're talking about how they're going to sell it to the public, how this is more or less a done deal, you know, uh, it just, it was unsettling and that's, that's where it goes. As far as staffing levels and taxes and using money to appropriate, being brought up in that, we haven't done anything that's too different than many of the other districts. If you look at Anthony, in the same time period, their price, their cost for their personnel has gone up 50%. It went from $1,001 to like $1,900,000 in the same time period. And the reason is, is they added staffing, they increased their pay and they did the things that we did. They had a surplus that they could draw down on, but they also balanced the surplus with the sale of an engine that's in reserve, um, which cash is going to be used to account for part of their accounting process. It's the same thing as putting money into the spot, but in this case it's coming from the sale of a vehicle. It, it, you know, those things weren't brought up. A misguided thing also would be that the Order to Generals Office, we file quarterly with the Order to Generals, they've had no issues with our filings, they have no problem with our audits. It is the same information. If anything, we have been doing this for years. Our audits way before they were ever required. Um, it is, uh, you know, you've got districts in town that don't file their quarterly reports, um, but you guys all get copies of them, so if you had questions regarding them, they certainly could. And the last thing I'll leave it with is that the increase in staffing, I mean, Hillary, you were on the, the Town Council when Ann came to us and asked, what could we do if Central Coventry had a problem? What would you do? What can the independent, you know, all these districts help out with? We added staffing, we answered the call. And so we answered the call and we get noted that we'd raised taxes. If we didn't raise taxes and add staffing, John would have us on Facebook saying that we couldn't cover a call. It's like, you know, what are you going to do? I mean, it's like, you can't, you miss a call because somebody called out sick, you're on Facebook. You raised taxes to add staffing, you're on Facebook. It's, 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 you know, kind of ridiculous. Um, and the only, sorry, the last thing on dynamics, when that report came out, it was panned by Town Council, by every, every fire district, by every chief. The numbers were wrong. When I asked about the numbers during that meeting, they said, don't go by the numbers, the numbers are wrong. They show staffing with incorrect number of hours per shift, they don't have platoon staffing, the, the numbers are all over the place. They also, at one point, say that you could run the, the town with three rescues. So all of a sudden, dynamics is the hero. The heat map is fantastic, but that was about the only usable piece off the dynamics. And I think that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Bosque. Last call, Council Chambers, I do want to move to Zoom. Anyone else, public comment on docketed items only? I see we have two hands raised, if you could just bring in the first person. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Stacy Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. I'd also like to say my husband would like to speak separately after me. I just want to comment as a resident of Western, regardless of how other people in Western may feel, I feel that our fire department is excellent, provides amazing service as is. We've actually had to use rescue service before for one of our children. They were here quickly, very professional, provided wonderful service and we are happy to pay for that as a community. But to say that we will not get a vote in what we want the future of our community to look like is just wrong and is really against kind of the foundation of what our democracy is. I think the smallest, most local form of governance is the one that's going to be truest to the people. And honestly, our department does a great job, they're very honest about what our services are costing and where our money is going. And I don't think it's unfair to say that that is a problem that we've had in town, um, just in general, and that there's really a lack of trust. Um, so I would say, if nothing else, give us the opportunity, convince us that your plan is going to be the cost savings that is going to provide better service to us and let us decide if this is something that we want to do. Also, I've noted that Jonathan is here tonight and he hasn't been at several Town Council meetings and I do hope that he is recusing himself of this vote, um, since it is directly related to the fire district. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi folks, um, can you still hand raise? This is Tom Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. So a couple of things, one, just the fact that the public comment has been nearly unanimous and opposition to the merger speaks volumes, as well as the fact that, um, both of our representatives, Rep. Takis Rogers and Senator Chippendale, or Rep. Chippendale are all opposed to this, says a lot that they felt they need to step in at this. And I hope all the residents take note that they're, you know, these are all representatives that have very, done a very good job of looking out for, um, the residents of Coventry. And the fact that they're needing to step in, I hope residents are taking note that, that, um, they're looking out for our best interests here. Um, and they want to make sure that the, the town stays, uh, physically viable and, and that, um, our, our taxes don't go up. And so, um, when people are looking at this and evaluating, um, where in theory a merger could be a cost savings, the reason why people are, um, so vocally opposed to this is because there's a lot of underlying things that are not going to cost, uh, cost savings for anybody in this town. Um, and, you know, there are people that are trying to push this through and make it look good on paper, but there's a lot of things that, you know, the people who are being vocal and speaking up at these public comments, um, are doing so because they're trying to raise awareness that, um, you know, this is not going to be good for anybody in the town, any of the residents, um, and it's going to hurt us all. Um, Western Coventry is, uh, undeniably the, the best-run, uh, station district in, in the town. Um, and the fact that, um, the, the, the district that is well-run is being vocally opposed to this, um, you know, also speaks to, you know, why are, you know, what are the issues that they see when they're the ones that are doing things well and doing things right? So I, I just hope residents are, are being aware of this, um, and, and, you know, ma, you know, making sure that, that nothing's being pushed through as, as, uh, you know, sugar-coated, um, this is going to be good for us when it really it's going to put us in a worse, uh, fiscal situation than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. We have one other member of the public on Zoom. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sherry Elderton, 979 Victory Highway, Coventry, Rhode Island. Um, so as a member of Green and Western Coventry, I have to absolutely say that you guys cannot take our voice. You try every time there is something going on to take away our voice and we've had it. We have a right to decide what happens with our tax dollars. President Lima, you should be ashamed of yourself yet again. You are trying to take our voice. You cannot do that. That is wrong. This merger is not going to help us. It is going to put us more in debt, it's going to increase our taxes, it is going to make it so that we're paying an astronomical amount of money to pick up the debt that is made in the eastern end of town. That is not fair to Western Coventry citizens. And Mr. Pasquale, you should be ashamed of yourself. Closing a fire department down so that you could go make a vote at a Town Council meeting? Yeah, don't think we didn't notice. I think people should be looking into that. You have absolutely no right voting on anything that has to do with the fire department when you're a member of the fire department. So again, shame on all of you for trying to take our rights away from us.
Last call, public comment on docketed items on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Yes, we see your hand raised, please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Do you copy?
Yes, we can hear you now. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
All right, we'll try one more time. This is the first time I've done this. I'm an old guy, so, uh, bear with me. Uh, Bob Gustini, 861 Perry Hill Road, Green, Rhode Island. I'd like to go back a little bit and talk about the, uh, 1942 fire, uh, because, you know, I've been around for 86 years in this town and I used to live in the eastern end. Um, and that 42 fire, there was only two fire departments in town that showed up. It happened to be Washington and Anthony, or actually the one that's down in Phoenix, okay? Uh, if it had not been for the United States Navy, we'd, we'd have lost the whole town because we're just going to keep up to it. But let's get back to where we are, uh, where we are with, uh, with this vote. We need, we need to have some say. Like I said, I've been around for 86 years. I used to live in the eastern end at Abbott's Crossing. And let me tell you, all of these years, Western Coventry has been second fiddle, been second fiddle, not only in the, you know, the, the town itself, but also with, with the schools. So, you know, it goes back a long, long time. And, and most of the people out here, uh, want to be heard, they want to be heard. I went to that, both of those meetings at the State House. I saw a lot of union people there, one guy that didn't tell the truth. And I didn't see anybody from the Town of Coventry. I didn't see the Town Council President, the Assistant President, no one. So is this a union deal or is it a town deal? And Mr. Pasquale, I'd like to see the whites of your eyes out in Western Coventry. If you were out here, you would, and went to the annual meeting, you would have seen in your own eyes how people, how people felt about their right to vote, okay? Now we don't need another deal that's going on down in Washington with democracy. We need people on that council to sit here and give us a right to vote and maybe it's for the good. Did you ever think about that? It might be for the good. I think, I think you need to really take this under consideration and really agree that we need this vote out there. Now listen, I know a couple of you guys are sitting on that council, known for a long time, known Chief Brown- Now, listen, I know a couple of you guys are sitting on that council, known for a long time, known Chief Brown for a long time, okay? And I remember when Ms. Capaldi was a young baby at the mother and twins club in Warwick. So I go back a long, long time. And let me tell you, I don't want to be second fiddle anymore. So I hope you get the message, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Last call, public comment on docketed items on Zoom. Public comment going once, twice, three times. Public comment on docketed items is closed. We'll now move to resolutions of the council. We have one this evening, Resolution 2025-63, opposing 2025 Senate Bill 1010 and 2025 House Bill 6249. Do I hear, I'm sorry, Councilman Pasquale?
Madam President, I will be recusing from this subject.
Okay. To introduce the resolution for discussion, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to what?
To review the resolution.
When you...
Do I have to say it in a certain way?
Yeah, a motion to whether it's approve or reject.
Approved.
Motion to approve from Councilwoman Capaldi. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Verducci. Discussion. Members of the council?
So, if I could, I just want to say thank you for everyone coming out tonight. I really hope some of you will come to the municipal fire commission meeting to be heard on this. Yeah, I really do, because it was my first one the last time, and I know I asked a lot of questions because I'm interested in getting this right too. Tonight's vote is our opinion on what the state senate and house want to do with something. We have this a little bit confused tonight. I think some of the conversation kind of went more towards the actual fire commission and where that's going to head. I have not made any decision or seen any final products yet. They do not exist yet. There's still time to do lots of different options. There are things we need to explore still. This is the process that was put forth by a previous town council, and this is also something that we've been provided to do in the town charter. A few months back, people in this town were very interested in the town charter and making sure that we followed it. We are presented with a similar situation now where the charter tells us exactly how we are to proceed, and people, you know, obviously do not necessarily agree with that, but that doesn't, that doesn't mandate anything is going to go through. This is simply our commentary on what the bill at the state level is going to do. They're still going to debate that and have their decision on that bill. This is simply a resolution from us saying, hey, this is in our town charter. We've been asked to do this. You know, so we still want that process to continue. My seat in particular, I represent all residents, so this is a townwide position for me. I have to consider townwide benefit. Again, doesn't mean I will automatically say yes or no to anything. We still have to finish the process. So, please, I know some of you may shake your heads and think I'm making this stuff up, but if you could come to the meetings and ask any question you want, it would be a lot more productive than this display. For those of you who commented before, I really appreciate you reaching out. I'm always willing to listen and be educated by people. I have not made any decisions, and that's simply the truth. And I do value what you're saying out in Western. For me personally, it's a town-wide decision, and that's the way I'm looking at it.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
I think we have our resident charter expert in the room, and Mr. Guthrie, thank you for speaking earlier. For months, and according to what JP just stated, and I like to go along with him, for months, we were under scrutiny on social media, and somebody mentioned social media early, earlier of how bad things happen on social media, what is spoken about. Well, we were condemned left and right, whether we did or did not do anything wrong. I know personally for me, I did nothing wrong against the charter. The public has been on us to follow our charter. Our charter is the town's law. So what this resolution says is we want the right to finish what we've been doing, because that's what we've been doing. We have to follow the charter. I hear what you guys say. I lived, I grew up in Western Coventry. I hear what you say, but you know what? We are one town, and we're going, we have a lot of time to figure out what's going to happen. This is not a vote for municipal...
Please, please don't call out. Let her speak, please.
So that's what my yes vote right now was for, is to allow us to continue on with what we started. Please come to the meetings, come to these meetings, come to the fire meetings. We don't want to see you just when things, you don't like something. We want you here all the time so we can learn from each other and discuss what you want to do, and we want to hear that. So, let's move forward.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes, thank you. I agree with what my colleagues have presented tonight, especially the Vice President Verducci. I am a townwide guy. I think we have to look at this as a town-wide perspective. I believe our charter is clear on what we should do on this, and I think the fire commission should finish their study. No decisions have been made by the fire commission, and we'll get to that point at some point, and then we'll come back to a vote. But I do agree that the commission's got to finish their votes. I do think a couple of things were said tonight by people that spoke that were not 100% correct, and I can speak to those individuals personally about that if they would like. Elizabeth, I'm kind of concerned about, you said that Western Coventry was left out of a grant. I'd kind of like to know what that is, because if it was the Opera Grant, all districts, is it the Opera Grant? Yeah. No, all the fire chiefs were put on notice. They were. I sent the emails. I got responses from everybody, so.
The town council resolution also included them and had a formula to make sure, yeah?
And Western Coventry benefited from that to the tune of almost $70,000, so, yeah. So, so I think there's some things out there that, you know, people are saying, well, the fire commission's saying this, and Western Coventry's saying that. I think the commission has got to finish their work, you know, and that's my feelings on it. But I, at the end of the day, as Councilwoman Capaldi said, we are being driven by the charter of our town. And, you know, that there is a ordinance in there that talks about a municipal fire department. It's not a done deal. And that's what we go by, is the charter. A council member that ain't here right now held up the charter one time and said that everybody read it. So, that's where I am on this, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council? You know, I think tonight, the discussion turned to thinking that this resolution is a vote about whether or not we're going to be a municipal fire department, and that's not what this resolution is. This resolution is about allowing the town to put on its big boy pants and take control of stabilizing a life and death service. It hasn't made any decisions, and it's looking to continue that work free of state interference. We, this commission has an 11-member commission. We do have representation, as we've pointed out. One of your board members, Board Member Weinmiller, there have been times that she's brought forward the perspective of Western, and I'm also on record making sure that her opinion is elevated. There have been times when I do believe that we've heard people say, you know, she felt, maybe felt dismissed, but I've always made sure that she's had the floor, especially as the only other woman on this commission. And I appreciate what she's contributed. We've also had discussion via email. I know that she's communicated with the town manager as well with her concerns, and I appreciate her work and her contributions. We've been meeting twice a month since January, and most of the time where you all are sitting right now is empty. We're having a meeting in front of an empty room. We're having a meeting in front of an empty Zoom audience. So I invite, I would, most of the time when we end the meeting and we ask for public comment, there's, there's no public comment. So, to that effect, we also made it a point in the resolution that established the municipal fire commission, that it be an OMA-compliant and fully public, livestreamed and recorded commission of the town, which it is, to make sure that folks could be involved in the process, and if they couldn't attend, could at least attend via Zoom, or they could see the recordings after the fact. That was, that was something that was called out very specifically. I personally have not received any of the feedback with respect to whether certain information in the commission has been presented incorrectly, that there was concern that a certain point was not heard. In specific, I haven't received a phone call. I haven't received an email to that effect. I'd love to have that dialogue. We'd love to have that perspective. But I, we need to have that come through, whether it's to all the council members, whether it's to all the members of the commission, through the town clerk, she can send it to the whole commission, or their phone call could be made. But I haven't received that dialogue to tell me that they believe certain information has been presented incorrectly, except in the form of this work with members of our Coventry delegation. This isn't about a voice being taken away. We have a process where we're meeting twice a month with a commission that's representing all districts, that's inviting the public process, that's inviting conversation. In fact, early on in the commission process, we decided that we would dispense with traditional Roberts rules to make it a conversation, to make it more of a workshop, and more of a conversation amongst each other, and try to tear down the formalities and make it more, how are we going to, to, to address this? What does the future of our town look like? Let's have a conversation. You know, there was a, there was a question posed of, what is the town council afraid of? I might pose, you know, let's talk about Western Coventry, folks. What are you afraid of? Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the details. Come to our meetings. The work is not finished. The work is not finished. This is not a vote tonight whether or not we're going to be a municipal fire department, whether it's going to be a single independent district, whether it's going to be eastern districts versus a western district, that nothing has been decided because we haven't finished the work. That conversation is still ongoing. So, tonight, the vote is about the ability of the town to continue its policy exercise of addressing a town service, a town issue, free from state interference. Let's have that conversation. I haven't had any conversation with any individuals in this room where I've told them where my, where my decision is on this and where I stand, and eventually the work product of this. If I did, I could see how this opinion would come forward tonight in public comment, but it hasn't. I'd appreciate that conversation. I'd appreciate seeing you out at the market, out in town, having that conversation. So I invite you to do so. We meet on the second and fourth Thursday of every month. Let's keep this going. Let's not have this be, as Councilwoman Capaldi said, when we're upset and we're angry. Let's have this conversation about every, every other topic. That's why we have two public comments on our agendas. And it's, you know, more than many other public bodies allow, and honestly, it's not even required, but we know that this is important. This is what democracy is about, telling those that you voted to represent you how you would like them to represent you. So, tonight's vote is not about a, whether or not we're going municipal. Once again, it's about the process of thoroughly examining this and not speculating and going off of emotion. We're looking at the facts and figures. If there's dispute about any, anything that's been talked about in the municipal fire commission, please send an email to me. Please send an email to Vice President Verducci, who also sits on this commission. Tell us where the discrepancies are. Tell us what the concerns are. Is it a concern that your, your taxes are going to balloon? Let's talk about that. We've done, we've done, we've done different scenarios to see what that could look like for residents. Let's talk about it. Let's talk about those concerns. But we cannot preempt a process. We cannot guess where something's going to go when a decision has not been made. The, the town too often has barreled ahead and made huge decisions without doing its due diligence. Well, we're doing it now, on something that's very serious. This isn't about whether we're going to merge libraries or we're going to merge Parks and Rec Services. This is fire and EMS, whether or not someone shows up to your home when you call 911. We're taking the time to do that, and I'd ask our members of our General Assembly delegation and the members of the community to allow us to continue that process and participate with us. And with that, if there's no further discussion, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Or in the affirmative, zero, and the negative, motion passes.
Lastly, we'll move to public comment for undocketed items. Those items not on our agenda this evening. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Heavy, 607 Weaver Hill Road. Again, one of the items that I mentioned in the previous discussion was the representation on the municipal fire commission for the firefighters of Western Coventry. I know for a fact that our chairman, when he submitted Ms. Weinmiller's name for the membership, also requested that a position be made on the commission or representation from our firefighters, who are not part of any union. It was not answered. It was not acted upon. Still would like to see that change made so that the firefighters of Western Coventry are represented on that commission.
Would you like the exact reply I made to Mr. Bosque via email? Because you said it wasn't, it went unanswered. I, Mr. Bosque sent the email on October 3rd, and I replied on October 11th. I said, "Hi Steve, my apologies for the delayed reply to your email. It's been a crazy week between my full-time job, grad school, and some hefty meetings around the school budget and towns audits. Thank you for reaching out and sharing your concerns. I appreciate your dedication to the firefighters in the Western Coventry Fire District. The decision to structure the committee involves several considerations, including ensuring representation across all fire districts. The reason I originally had it worded as non-union designee from each district was to allow the districts the opportunity to appoint whoever they wanted and not just someone from the Board of Directors. I still see that as an opportunity with how the resolution is written. Since there is no distinct separation between labor and the Board of Directors in Western Coventry Fire District, which is unique in Coventry, this designee could very well be a member of the firefighting force if the board chooses to appoint one. But as I understand it, I saw that a board member is being put forward for appointment. The intention was not to exclude your district's firefighters, but to respect the autonomy of the Western Coventry Fire District Board and their labor in making its own decision about who best represents its interests on the committee. If the Board of Directors wishes to nominate one of its firefighters to serve in this capacity, I would be more than happy to ensure their participation. These commission meetings will also be public and adhere to the Open Meetings Act, so I hope that Western firefighters and others interested parties come to the meetings and participate. I also want to make clear that I intend to be one of the council members on this commission, and I've been making it clear that this commission will not be negotiating any collective bargaining agreement, nor is it making the decision to merge or become a municipal department. Regardless of the public sentiment, my goal is for this commission to put together a prospective budget and implementation plan for the town council to then consider its options slash next steps. It is not this commission's role to make that decision for the town. Thanks for reaching out, and I'm happy to meet for coffee anytime with you or your firefighters to foster an open dialogue on this. Best, Hillary."
Thank you. That was not the information I had.
Any other members of the public? Public comment on undocketed items. Those items not on our agenda this evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Bosque, 8 Raven Boulevard, Coventry, Rhode Island. On that email though, it was, we could have either had Jillian or a fire person. Not both was what the offer, if I'm not mistaken, is in the letter. It was one or the other. It wasn't...
You never replied back and asked to continue dialogue.
Okay, because you kind of shut down, you said it was one or the other, was what the reply was. You weren't looking to add more people. It was one or the other. And, I lost my train of thought, sorry. On the meetings that you're having, the regular committee meetings, I did attend the first committee meeting. I followed Mr. Novak up in asking, are you going to do a deeper dive or looking into the audits? I had asked about three or four questions. Since the, it had been going on, on, zero of them have been even reviewed or answered. I asked, what are you going to do with structural deficits of districts? How is that going to be spread out? I asked, what are you going to do with assets? How are they going to be acquired? The agenda that you posted for your resolution when it passed isn't even the same agenda that was given at the first meeting that you were going to follow. There are pieces that are not on the agenda that was published for the, for the committee versus the original... versus the original agenda that you had produced for the resolution. So some of those things didn't add up. The order of your agenda, none of the heavy lifting has looked at it, has gone through. I have watched every single meeting, I have attended one of the meetings. It hasn't been quite every other week, I mean, you've had quite a few cancellations and time shifts and then there was a meeting that got postponed or was scheduled and then not. Before this last meeting, it was a month before the meeting before that, which at that meeting is when Brian had produced the spreadsheet of all the costs and what the tax increases would be for the different districts. Suggestions were made to question if you saw numbers that were wrong so they could work on in detail, send it all out, trying to mark it up. We had asked for Excel spreadsheets so we could actually work on that, we couldn't get one provided. We did do markups, I asked Jillian to ask a bunch of questions because I was traveling that last meeting. She did and they were kind of just rebuffed or not even followed up with. So, you know, I have been paying attention and if I can make a meeting, unfortunately, your meeting's at Thursday nights at 6:30 and our meeting's at Thursday night at 7 o'clock for the district. It gets a little bit difficult, especially when we're going through, just finished up with our budget period where we meet every other week also. So, there's a couple of meetings that Jillian missed of ours because she was down here. So it's, you know, gets a little bit difficult at 6:30 Thursday when we're 7 o'clock Thursday. But I do appreciate the committee, I think that the other point that I would take where the trust factor is sometimes what the taxpayers are coming into it. When one of the committee members asks the town council president or committee president to consider putting an extra $600,000 into the public safety fund so that he could get a line, an agreement to hire four guys for his station, sounds like it's a done deal. I mean, that would bankrupt that, if they don't go through, they can't afford the $600,000 for the staffing that they were looking for.
I flat out told him in that meeting that I was not going to do that. I hung on the record.
As a committee member making that ask, I'm not asking, I think it's a great thing. But if, if the committee person is already asking that this is a good step forward for funding for positions he can't afford unless this goes through. You see, it's like, I'm asking you for $600,000, I can't pay you back unless this goes through. So it seems like if, and if you haven't yet played the last meeting notes, where basically they're talking about selling it to the public, selling, oh, we got to do this to sell it to the public. They didn't answer Jillian's questions about, you know, how, we'll make an example of sending people out of the town to put out a fire, it was like, what are they going to, you know, it's like, you know, they twisted her with it when she brought up that the money calculated for their salaries was wrong. They twisted and said, well, no, you're talking about when we had the other eight, that's how come there's a big difference. It wasn't for the other eight, it was for the initial eight. So, just does seem like she was being dismissed.
Steve, if I could, it sounds like the Thursday nights are not a good night for you and I do think that your voice is important, not trying, hang on, let me.
For you guys, I mean, you know.
Let me finish. I, I don't want you to feel like anything's being shoved down your throat, nor the people of Western. What I ask, Manager Perillo, I think it would be really prudent if you could set up a time that works for Mr. Bosque, Ms. Weinmiller, myself, Councilman Verducci, and also Mr. Savetti, for us to sit down. Let's go through, if you could send ahead maybe the bullets that you're concerned about, Jillian that you're concerned about, let's meet and talk about this. I'll make that commitment to you, I'm sure Vice President Verducci would be willing to make that commitment to you.
All right, I will do, any day but Tuesday, I babysit, so.
Even whether it's, whether it's morning, noon, night, I will make it, I'll make it myself available, whatever works for you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Nothing about the fire department. Just wanted to congratulate you guys on whoever's involved with the paving of Briar Point, the striping of Briar Point. Scott has been a breath of fresh air at the recreation department. And I'm looking forward to things working so much better this summer. So, whoever's been involved, whether it's all of you, so much thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Jerry. Public comment on undocketed items?
Kind of has to do a little bit with the fire districts and the charter. No, I am not the resident expert on the charter, although I have read quite a bit of it. And on social media, people would challenge me on this and that, so. Mr. Bosque, I have a copy of the charter for you before you leave. That deals with the public law, that was adopted by the voters. Thank you, thank you. We're doing, we're doing pretty good so far. Also, Mr. Mays got up, said that they budgeted, is it a $50,000 surplus? Someone said, someone said that you budgeted more. Budgeted a, so you built a surplus into your budget. Right, that's against state law. And then your Mr. Mays, and your, I mean, your Mr. Hevy. I think you made a couple of comments when we were doing our charter review. You called something about the poison pill coming out about the fire department. We wanted to have the entire town have a say on this and you were against that. So now you only want to have half of the town have a say on it. I'm not opposed to, to the people of Western Coventry voting on something. But when you send a bill to the House and it doesn't follow election law, I think that they're probably going to have a problem passing it because of what happened in Central Coventry under the Pat Morgan thing and the cardboard box with the paper ballots, we don't want to see that anymore. And like I said, one fire district in this town fails and they're all done. So, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Bosque got that information because they've been chasing stuff around and throwing, you know, screenshots on Facebook, not understanding exactly where to look in the charter. So, you know, I have nothing to hide, nobody should have anything to hide. You know, let's be honest with each other and let's take care of each other as a community.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room, public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. I had two things that I just wanted to ask questions on tonight. I know there was a big push for Briar Point and I'm just curious if anyone had gotten any numbers or an idea of how many people have purchased passes and how that part is actually going.
That is a good question.
Just, just curious if.
You're still printing the passes and stuff and getting them in, right?
I know the passes are made, they are getting the word out. June 13th is the beginning of the entry with the passes, but I do not know how many they've sold to date.
Okay, have they, but they have started to sell them?
Yes, yes.
Could we get, can we talk to the director in a couple of weeks to see how many, where we are for our next meeting?
Yeah, I was just curious to see if, if people were, how it was doing, really, was just my curiosity.
We'll, we'll check in with him.
Awesome. And my next question was just for Councilwoman Capaldi. I know that you were away, I sent you a message, I didn't expect you to respond being away. But I am still working and waiting on the EDC information. The assistant town manager did reach out to another resident who also put in her application and there were just a couple discrepancies maybe that I wasn't sure how it really worked. There are seven seats for that open, correct?
Yeah.
So this other resident was told that there was one seat available.
Let me, me bring everyone up to speed.
Sure, sorry.
So, you kind of shot, you know, you jumped forward because we were talking about that one day. So like, put it in, put it in.
This is back in March that I had entered my.
Yep, and then when I got the, it was posted on our website on the town manager's section, I think. And it did say, EDC, one available seat. And I brought it up to the assistant town manager several times. But she kept it one because at that moment, there really was only one seat available. And then I believe it was the beginning of May, we can't talk about this.
No, no, we can't, what I was going to say is, we appointed those people a long time ago. My bet is those terms have expired.
And they have, yeah.
And they expired after we spoke.
My question about the seats is that both, myself and the other resident, we both own farms locally. And we were told that only one person in agriculture can be on there and I wasn't sure.
Can you let me take that away with me and I'll talk to her and I'll get back to you on that? And, and town manager, a couple of weeks ago, I kind of formalized the resolution that the assistant town manager wrote and I haven't heard anything from her. So I'd like to see it, that she, I mean, it was no, I was not implementing any changes into the content other than the English language and making it a little bit more formal document. So I'd like to see the resolution before.
She's working on it today, I know that.
Awesome, great, thank you. So, we'll stay in touch.
Awesome, just hoping to see that come to fruition someday.
Me too, thank you.
Thanks, Brittany. Any other members of the public council chambers, undocketed items, public comment? Any members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. Public comment going once, twice, three times, public comment is now closed. And at this time at 7:40 PM, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilwoman.